All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. Kelsey, you want to check and see if we've had anybody sign up?
I checked right before and I didn't have anybody and now it says the form's currently unavailable, so I don't know, Kelsey, have, can you see anything on your end?
Sorry, I'm checking, it's refreshing here. Um, no, I do not have anyone signed up at this time.
Okay, so we will go ahead and go to our agenda.
So there was no public comment tonight, nobody signed up for it.
Sorry, the train's going by. We'll do the monthly board education session. Daryl, you're gonna present the second quarter 2021 strategic plan scorecard.
Yeah, let me share my screen here.
The members, you should have gotten this in the packet as well as Gary sent it separately too.
Yep, can you see that okay on your screen?
Yes.
Okay, so, so just to kind of refresh everybody's memory, at the end of 2020, the final quarter of 2020, we made the decision to, to kind of forego some of the, the tracking of our strategic plan items. Just because of the demands of COVID and other things going on, it was just too much for our managers to keep up with. And so we have rebooted that for quarter two of 2021. And so that's why you see a few spaces in the January to March column. Some of those are empty, but April through June should be filled out. And then as we go along throughout the year, every quarter, we'll give you an update on July through September and then October through December. So these first couple of pages are, are key performance indicators. So those are our overarching kind of community health numbers that we're tracking. And so as I go through this, this quarterly report, we've got the key up here. So blue is exceeding expectations, green is meeting, yellow is caution, and then red is at risk. And so I'm gonna just highlight the ones that are exceeding caution or at risk as we go through, just to kind of keep, keep everything moving. I don't want to go through each separate one. But as you can see, multiple of our key performance indicators on our first couple of pages are, are green, so they're good to go. We are falling behind on a couple. And some of that is just due to some program activities were reduced in those areas, and that's what most of these are. Or we're waiting on some baseline numbers still. So this first yellow one has to do with heart disease rates. And again, we're trying to ramp up our chronic disease program. But, but heart disease death rates have gone up in our community over the last several years. And as you can see, our most current data is 2019. So we really try to get some of that, that most current health data from the state and from other mechanisms across the county. But that's our tracking here. So we're falling a little bit behind on that. This next one that's red, this is mainly because we just haven't gotten our data back from St. Louis County. So gosh, how long ago was it? A couple of years ago, the board adopted the ordinance to join St. Louis PDMP. And so we, we had our baseline numbers and we were trying to get these numbers right before we submitted our, our, our numbers to Fab, but we haven't gotten those yet. You know, they're swamped with COVID as well over on the St. Louis side. So as soon as we get those numbers, we'll update. So hopefully we'll at least be in the, you know, yellow to green range on that. I would, I would expect someone to finally get the numbers. We just don't have those numbers yet, so we wanted to call that out. As we scroll down on the food insecurity rates, we were doing pretty good on these over the last couple of years. And then, you know, COVID and then decline in the economy took a turn for a lot of families. So our food insecurity rates are, are in the kind of caution level. And then access to healthy food through food initiatives is also in a caution level. But, you know, internally, we've been doing, putting more resources towards the harvesters. Every month, we have that food, food bank, drive-through food bank, and we continue to work through different initiatives to help improve that in our county. So moving on that. Again, smoking rates during this time, we haven't gotten the numbers on this. So this is just kind of a guesstimate on, on our numbers. But the next survey will occur in 2021, so we'll be able to update in 2022 for that one. Everything else is looking pretty good on our, on our overarching key performance measures. So hopefully we can get those yellows and reds turned around once we can, can shift resources back to, to those activities. As we scroll down, hopefully don't want to go too fast here, we're hitting a blue one. And so measuring and demonstrating our impact through data and measurement. And so just through COVID, we have instituted a lot of different program activities that, that track COVID data, that communicate COVID data. As well as through our community health assessment work, we're chairing the data committee with North, Northland Health Alliance. And so we've updated just a lot of our data reporting and data collection mechanisms. We got, now we've got a data analyst on our team as well. So we have made quite a few improvements throughout the course of our strategic plan on that. Scrolling down again, so disease prevention and health protection. This is just kind of the overarching category for all of these that fall underneath it. So our STD clients are up quite a bit. That are, are testing, so we've just increased capacity in our program for STD testing. So that's really good. And then on the, the environmental health side, at least a 3% reduction in the number of foodborne illness risk factor violations annually. And so we're at 6.7%. So our environmental health team does a risk factor evaluation every year on that. So those numbers came back good. And then on our water quality for our pool inspections, again, a 2% reduction in disinfectant residual violation. So we want to see a reduction in those violations through education and counseling. So we've got a 2.1% reduction in that, so we're exceeding expectation there. And then on the, on the, also on the environmental health side, just a really great response time on complaint investigations. So every 100% have been responded to within 24 to 72 hours. And there was 35 complaints that we investigated in January through April. So big kudos to our environmental health team there. Okay, last one on this. So increase in the number of children ages 11 to 18 who are up to date with their required school immunizations by 5% over the duration of the plan. And so as you can see, we've, we've had a big, big increase. A lot of work has gone into our immunization program and our outreach to schools and our immunization clinics in the schools, I think are, are big keys to that. Right now, although the back-to-school M's clinics, I think we have just about every appointment full. So our nurses are, are chipping away at that and they're doing a great job during this back-to-school time. So we're definitely exceeding expectations there. And then for an HR component here, so annual unplanned turnover rate of 12% or less. And so one of the things we, we made a kind of a tweak in our reporting over the, over the years of the strategic plan. It was planned versus unplanned, so we put the unplanned here. But then with, with COVID, we had a lot of temporary staff. So we pulled that out too, because sometimes those are, you know, DCIs, disease case investigators or, or temporary nurses. It's been really hard to keep those filled with the demand on, on those individuals. But for our, our regular folks that aren't kind of COVID hired staff, we've got a 5.5% rate. And so that's a really good rate. So definitely exceeding our under 12% mark on that. And then also on our volunteers and internships, again, that's just kind of the sign of the times. We had discontinued our volunteer and our internship program due to COVID for quite a while. So we're just kind of in a caution level there, but we have started to, to see an increase in, in those folks since we've reinstated that. Okay, another thing that's taken a little bit of a hit is quality improvement. So our quality improvement committee. And we haven't been able to do quite the education and really our daily activities, although our, our staff really look to improve processes all the time. You know, kind of that, that quality improvement committee work and things like that are just kind of secondary to their daily work and, and COVID activities. So I'm fully confident, once we, once we kind of get out of this and, and get back into a groove with education and really focusing on some, some key quality improvement initiatives and going through the full process, I think this will go up. But right now, we've had a little bit of dip in that number. The next ones that are falling in are all communication related. And so, you know, I've talked just about every month about our, our website numbers are up, our Facebook and Twitter numbers are up, all of those things, all of the engagement around COVID activities and how we're trying to do outreach and get communication out to the public. So all of those are just, we're just really knocking them out of the park. Kelsey's doing a great job on that front. You know, back in 2020, we had 62,000 visitors to our website, which was huge. And then in 2021, January 2021, we were all the way up to 124,000. So just crazy numbers that we probably will never see again in, in our measurement. But, but Kelsey's done a great job managing that. And so again, the, the Facebook and the, the Twitter engagement is, those numbers are out of the park as well. Last one that, that kind of has fallen off a little bit. So with all of the COVID-related activities, we have made some updates to standard operating procedures, but we haven't quite hit that 33% updated mark every year that we, that we planned on. So we're going through another process with that, with our, our continuous improvement specialists. We just hired a replacement for, for Brooke, which, which moved over to a program manager. So she got an internal promotion. But we're, we're working on that and that's going to be one of her items that it gets picked up once she gets, gets up to speed. So that's our strategic plan update for the quarter, our governance scorecard. On the program level, we do have a lot more reporting mechanisms here, but these are the things that we always just review with the board. Do you all have any questions or concerns, any things that we need to change the direction on?
Dr. Gates, this is the first time that you're hearing this. Any questions from you?
No, I think this is good. Nice to have a scorecard and kind of see where you're at. And there's a lot of activities going on and it's good.
Yeah, we've been, we've been pretty lucky. There's a lot of health departments across the state that have had to completely discontinue a lot of their program activities to respond to the pandemic. And we've, we've had a couple of downtimes with, with different program objectives that we've had to kind of pause on a little bit, but, and bounce back. But for the most part, we've been able to keep up the majority of our activities throughout this whole, this whole process. So our staff's done.
Any questions from anyone?
Nice job.
Thank you, Daryl. We'll go on now to the treasurer's report. Courtney?
Okay, so you received the financial statement with your packet. I'll just kind of guide us through it. Our current balance is a little over eight and a half million. Unvested is a little over four million. On the balance sheet, you can see our total liabilities and net assets were nine and $32,256. On the statement of revenues and expenditures, you can see our combined income, revenue over, under expenses were $272,809 under. I do have some notes from the revenues and expenditures. The revenue for July was $277,775. Year-to-date, the revenue is $6,514,265. We've received approximately 72% of our budgeted revenue. Expenses for June were $550,584. Year-to-date, expenses are $5,958,066. We have spent approximately 66% of budgeted expenses. COVID-related expenses has caused medical, professional and contracted service, janitorial and rent expenses to be higher than budgeted. Okay, on the capital fund, you can see that our, we're under $7,098. Our current year actual is under $37,179. Does anybody have any questions? I'm like rolling through this really fast, sorry. Reconciliation, everything was reconciled. You can see the check register. Okay, any questions over that? And then we'll do investments. Okay. All right, so in looking at investments, the security bank, the First Security Bank of Washington is going to mature this month. And then we've got the BMW Bank North America that we will purchase this month. So we'll need a motion on that, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, any questions for the treasurer?
Yeah, just on the investments, obviously there's limitations on what investment vehicles we can utilize. These are fairly, very, very low interest rates. And so can you educate me on what, what types of investment vehicles are we limited to?
This is about it as the, you know, the local government that we are. And so just over the past, these, these rates were up quite a bit. And we were trying to cycle, we had adopted a strategy to try to cycle through a little bit more short-term investments while rates were good, while they were going up. So we weren't really locked into anything. You know, very limited in the first place, but trying to capitalize on those gains. And so that was great when the market was good and we were, we were getting quite a bit of investment income there. But now just the markets turned and we're way, way lower than what we'd expected. And so we're just trying to, to capture whatever, you know, before we were doing maybe like three-month investments or six-month. And now we're just trying to look for a little, what's, what's kind of best. Every month, the options get a little bit slimmer. And if we don't, don't react quickly, we kind of lose out on some of the, the better rates. So really, this is about all we can invest in. But we are kind of adopting our strategy to, to just kind of maneuver as best as we can with those rates on a month-to-month basis. And some are going up to nine months. I think we did a year-long one recently. And so we've just tried to, just adapt our strategy as we've gone along.
Thank you.
Hey, any, any other questions? Not hearing any. I need a motion then to accept the treasurer's report for July 2021.
So move.
Second.
Questions or discussion? All those in favor?
I.
Hi.
Opposed? All right, and then I need a motion for the schedule of investments to accept the schedule of investments for July 2021.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Right. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? All right, then I need a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I need to read up the consent agenda.
A second. Courtney, second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, opposed? All right, new business. Daryl, are you doing this one?
Yeah, I can, I can touch on it. So this is a approval of the continuation of the emergency reserves for COVID activities. You know, we're still right in the middle of, of, of everything. Our, our rates are kind of at October levels right now. They're, they're starting to plateau and hopefully dip just a little bit. But they're still up there. And so, you know, the board's asked us to bring this item up every month just for consideration to continue to, to go through emergency reserves. We are, we continuously work and try to find different funding sources, whether it's from the state or, or wherever it may be, federal funds coming down to supplement those activities. So there may be some things that are temporarily, have to dip into emergency reserves to then get reimbursed on the federal side. But we do have, right now, we do have, have some that, that we don't have the funding source for. So again, DCIs are, disease case investigators are still in demand. We still, we're still learning our nurses to do the activities. So really, our situation hasn't changed since last month. You know, we do have a couple of vacancies for disease case investigators that, that we will need to fill. So our numbers are still going to be up to, to our current levels.
Okay. So I need a motion for approval of the continuation of the emergency reserves for COVID activities.
Motion. Second.
All right, discussion or questions? Daryl will want to keep this on a, every month, evaluation and we'll reassess each month if that's okay.
So add it to next month's agenda.
All right.
Do we have a, do we have a, the accounting or a balance, what we've had to pull across in the previous month out of the, out of the emergency reserves? And, and you may not have your hands right on it. I'm sure those, you guys track that really well.
We do track that, absolutely. I just don't have, have it on me right now.
Okay, yeah, we might, next month, we might want to just hear about that a little bit, so we kind of know what kind of cash volume we're talking about.
Okay.
Daryl, did you, Daryl, did you say you guys are starting to receive some federal? I know that, that those monies weren't coming in, that reimbursement, is that starting to flow now better?
Yeah, so we're working on some proposals. And so from our understanding, the Clay County got some funds. We want to make sure that we formulate a good plan, that we, you know, that, that mechanism has changed since the CARES funding. Whereas we got all that money upfront and then we towards it every month. This time, it's, it's kind of living with the county and then we have to submit reimbursement. So we're working on a, kind of formulating our plan where we would submit monthly to then get reimbursed from the county for those activities that we come up with. And then, yeah, there's some, some stuff that's getting funneled through the state as well. So we're working on our, our plans to, to push forward and get reimbursement there.
So do you know what the amount is or does the county have a set amount for Clay County or is it just all in one?
I don't, I don't know the full number yet. It was quite a good amount that they received. I just can't think of, of what it is right now. I understand that wasn't the full amount that they're supposed to get. They just got a partial amount from the, from the federal government. So we're gonna do our best to, to submit a solid plan on how to move forward and respond.
Yeah, thank you.
If you could include that then next month for an update for us, that would be good.
Okay.
Be nice to know. All right, I have a motion then to approve the continuation of emergency reserves for COVID activities. All those in favor?
Bye.
Opposed? I need a motion, excuse me, to approve the second quarter 2019, 2021 strategic plan scorecard that we reviewed.
Motion to approve.
All right, any questions or discussion on that? All those in favor?
Bye.
Hi.
Opposed? All right, Daryl, management monthly report.
Hopefully this shares well too. All right, are you seeing that? Okay?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so this is my report that you normally get. I'm gonna scroll down and just do the highlights here. So on page three, I just want to highlight, I mentioned it a little bit before, but Brooke, she was our continuous improvement specialist. She was promoted to a program manager on our community health side. So doing great work over there now. But we have hired a replacement for her and, and that actually happens to be one of our disease case investigators. So one of our disease case investigators, you know, she, she's done a lot of great work for us. And so she's going to shift to a, a full-time position for us with that. But then that leaves a void in the disease case, disease case investigator role. So that's one of the ones that we're just going to have to fill to continue to, to keep capacity up for that level. So that's what I was alluding to earlier. But it's nice to be able to kind of identify some good employees and then they'll still have the skillset. So when positions do open up, we've kind of vetted them and, and they can join our team full-time. So and we'll make that transition once the numbers go down for COVID a little bit. So our vital records, again, I've reported on this several, several months throughout the years so far, but we're ahead of budget on vital records revenue. And so we're at 20.5%. Not quite sure why we're so far ahead, but I think probably with the, with the pandemic, you know, we, we provide really great customer service, our ladies up front. And I think that just the, the way that they work through everything with the customers, the word gets out, you know, and our, our folks that come from funeral homes and things like that, I think that they've shifted their business permanently to us. And so that definitely when they're getting the, the death records, death certificates and things like that, that they need for those families, then, then they're using us instead of maybe another spot. So. Okay, again, on, on the DCI, staff continue to, to follow up on cases and contacts and we're approaching the staff capacity limit. So we're right there on the, on the border of that. And like I said, we'll be hiring those, those open spots for disease case investigators that we have right now to, to make sure our team keeps up with capacity. On the community health assessment side, so we've kicked up, kicked off our MAP process and the phase three assessments. And then also we are getting ready to start our local public health system assessment. So that's, you know, those things are just key to the, to the process of identifying the, the major health items that, that the community wants us to focus on. And then being able to really assess how our, our local public health system works together and, and anything that we need to kind of plan and strengthen relationships in certain areas, whether it's traditional partners, you know, like hospital systems, or maybe it's non-traditional partners, maybe like codes enforcement offices or road districts, whatever that may be. So we'll take that feedback from both of those assessments and, and work them into our plan.
Hey, Daryl, I have a question on that one before you go on. The, I noticed on your website, I know there's been surveys that have been sent, have been sent out. You know how is that getting some traction? I noticed on the website, there's an opportunity also to, to take the survey when you open the website. And just wondering if it's, if you've gotten a decent response on the survey?
Yeah, so, so far, I talked to Kelsey about this today. So that's one of the, the great things with our website. That's, it's kind of been a pop-up. And we've got probably 800 responses so far.
Oh, wow.
Number, but we haven't even advertised that yet. So Kelsey's gonna push the money like through Facebook and, and social media to, to throughout the communities and, and get some responses there. So we really haven't had a big kickoff with it yet, and we've already got 800 responses. So that's a good sign that the community is ready to give feedback to us and we can take that into account with whatever decisions that we're making.
Yeah, that's great.
Nice.
I think last time we got maybe 1,600 or 1,900 responses. And so it'll be well on our way. So Fab reaccreditation, so this is a little bit of outdated information. Brooke's, I think she's on the, the call here too. Her and Ashley have, have worked an incredible amount on, on the reaccreditation process. And then also the staff that submitted all of the documentation originally to, to her and Ashley. And so we finally did the final, final, final reviews of all of that information. And we had a few loosens to tie up. We did that this morning. And then submitted all of our reaccreditation application and documentation this afternoon. So that's been sent off. It's on. And so it's been kind of a great culmination of a, a lot of work. You know, we had the extension through, through Fab that we took advantage of and, and it, and it paid off. We definitely needed a little bit extra time, but I've been really proud of all of the work that they've done. And it's really, it's a, it was organized really, really well. Brooke did an awesome job and, and. it's really, it's a, it was organized really, really well. Uh, Brooke did an awesome job and, and uh you know, wouldn't have been able to do all that without her. So, so thanks, Brooke. And Ashley. And Gary. Gary did a lot of review too. So all right, on the environmental health side. So um, this chart here on page 10. So again, so this blue line that you see is, is the, the numbers from last year. So obviously in April, we weren't doing inspections. Um, and then even the red bars are this year. So February, we had some environmental health folks, uh, some of our inspectors, they were still doing disease ca- case investigations to help supplement our, our EPI staff. Um, they went back full force in March. And so that's where the bars came up. Uh, we're still way ahead of schedule uh in July. These are more of our traditional numbers that we see throughout the year. Um, you know, June, there's a lot of pools opening up. So our numbers dip a little bit. And then July, we're kind of normalizing a little bit. August, the same type of thing. So uh definitely on track for uh routine inspections and pre-opening inspections for environmental health. And then as we scroll down uh to, I think it's going to be page 12. Uh, yeah, so recreational water. So the blue line is all of our uh 2021 uh numbers. So obviously we're, we're seeing a lot of, of inspections in July. So we had 82 inspections. We'll see another uh big level in August, but, but uh the pools will start closing pretty soon uh once the, the holiday hits. And then those outdoor pools will close for the season. So definitely getting all those taken care of. And, and we've seen more festivals this year too. They're, they're starting back up. Let's see. Um, as we go to page 15. Uh, so um, so the state of Missouri, uh, they did a site visit for our VFC program. So the Vaccines for Children program. Um, and all of our folks in our M's program, they're doing a, a great, great job. We had zero compliance issues uh during that visit. So that uh just speaks very well that we're following all our procedures and, and doing everything that, that uh the VFC program uh asks us to do. So and Jason's on the call too here. And uh, so just thank you to him and his staff. Uh, they've done a great job with that.
Yeah, they're a detail-oriented bunch. So to pass that excellent.
Yeah, definitely. Um, and then on page 18, so our, our dental hygienist, you know, they've, they've normally been going out to schools and, and doing a lot of dental screenings and and fluoride varnish and everything like that. Well, well, they just started to uh to see some of our WIC clients again uh here for dental services in July. So those WIC families come in and, and they're, they're taking a look at, at those kids. And, and so they've, they've started a, a brush, book and bed program for some of our clients. And so those kids get a, a free book and, and kind of just to set some healthy bedtime routines and, and help, help remind them to brush. So they're, they're trying to get creative and, and implement new prevention ways um within their programs. And I think that they're going to be able to start going out into schools here pretty soon as well. So a, a little bit more than they, than they have been. So great work on their part. They're trying to make things happen. And I think, oh, we got one more thing here. So uh, WIC, um, so we, we have made the transition uh back to, back to seeing the clients in the office in July. Uh, we do have that hybrid approach. And so we're still uh also doing some virtual uh group nutrition classes for families that qualify for that. Um, uh, and that, that maybe want that virtual format a little bit more. So we're trying to be flexible a little bit on, on that as well. And I know it's been a a big transition for, for the WIC folks, you know, out of office and, and trying to transition back, trying to get their processes back down for in-person. And then getting those, those families adjusted to being in-person again as well. So it's been a, been a challenge, but they've done a great job. I think that does it for uh my report. Is there any, any questions?
There, uh, there's not a question about your report, but just looking forward, um, you know, we're, it looks like we're going to be, I know we've already opened up for third dose of vaccine. We have a lot more vaccine providers now in the community pharmacies and things like that, but we're gonna have a widely uh available third dose for all of our folks, starting September 20th, I think, is sort of the target date. They're looking at trying to get all of the high-risk people with a third dose before. Do you know if we're going to be doing any more mass vaccination clinics or what's, I, and I know it's still early. So what's, what are the thoughts at this point?
It is very early. We haven't, uh, we haven't had any discussions about a, a mass vax clinic because there are partners um that have spots available right now. You know, Operation Safe was kind of that stopgap mechanism.
Right.
We, we did um get a lot of vaccine out there very quickly. Uh, but we have not uh discussed anything about a mass vax uh site. We are pretty much booked up. You know, our numbers are, have, have gone through an uptick for our internal clinic. Um, Jason's on again too, like I said, but we, we've designated a few uh conference room one again uh for some larger days uh here coming up. So we'll increase our capacity a little bit um once back to school kind of gets done. Um, what was the other thing? Oh, we, we still haven't heard from the state on their, their full plan for those gift cards, that reimbursement. Um, we were on a call, our most iffy call um that we have every week. Actually, every other week now, uh, the, the deputy director of the, the health department, the state health department, he was on there and, and he said it was hoping to, to hear something by the end of this week um on that. But you know, it's the end of the week tomorrow and we haven't heard anything. So uh, and he said we'll hear in a, at the end of the week, a couple of weeks ago. So they're still working through it with the CDC. Um, I understand that they're working through some, some challenges as well, trying to implement it on their level. And then that has to trickle down to us. So we're, we'll evaluate that once we know all of the rules and the requirements that they're asking. Um, but until then, we're kind of stuck in limbo on that, that gift card uh process. If we're gonna jump on board with that or for, if we won't be able to make it happen. So let's see how that goes.
All right, Daryl, I, I had the same question. Um, do you want to go ahead and give your COVID-19 update or was that it?
Um, that's pretty much it. You know, I've kind of alluded to a few things here. Let me see if I can pull this up. You know, we've got our, our dashboard um on the website. Um, can you see that? Okay now?
Yes.
All right. And so, you know, this is, this is our, uh, our data hub. And so our, our folks uh in the background, they again do a great job on, on keeping all of this stuff up to date. You know, we're, we're sitting right about um kind of late October uh numbers. Um, hopefully we have an update. This hasn't been updated, but the numbers I saw earlier today, we've, I think we've got a, a small, small dip um on that. The numbers on, on this uh bar chart here. So um, that doesn't always mean it's always trending down. You know, it can, can go up again a little bit more, but uh at least we're kind of plateauing um on that front. So that, that's a good sign. Um, you know, uh, we have talked about um on the uh vaccination side, uh, Dr. Perdime, you mentioned that, that the third dose is coming along. And so uh, we've already had some discussions about how we're going to display that third dose information. And so it doesn't get tied into kind of all of the vaccination numbers that's called out um as third doses, um, just so we can keep a track on that too. So um, anything else you guys want to?
I had a So you're going to track them separately?
Yeah, so there'll be a
Report separate. Good.
Yeah. So we'll have first dose, second dose and third dose um in our, in our vaccine numbers.
Okay.
Um, I had a question. I've had some citizens ask about our vaccination, like in regard to just Excelsor Springs. And where I remember being able to go in and find it, you know, broken down by community, but I'm having trouble over the weekend in finding where to do that. I know that we, we used to be able to.
Uh, was that around school gating criteria? Maybe I'm trying to think of what that was. No.
I don't know, but you don't have to spend time on it right now. You know, I was just, uh, just wondering. And so
Okay. I will get, I'll get with our folks tomorrow and, and uh make sure that we get you that uh answered.
Thank you.
Daryl, can you verify that the guidelines were updated and posted?
Yes, they have been, uh, they have been posted. Yep.
Okay. I thought they had, but I just wanted to make sure. All right. Do you have anything else, Daryl?
Um, not on that. Gary, oh, wait, hold on a second. Too many things going on here too. Uh, there is no legislative update. Um, so that was the only other thing on, on Gary's agenda. Um, so that should do it.
All right. Anything from any of the board members? All right. I need a motion to adjourn at 6:40.
I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You guys have a good week, good month. Thank you very much. Good night.
Good night. Thank you, Daryl.
Thanks, Daryl.